We're ready.
All right, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for braving the elements to be with us this evening. Jody, could you call the roll, please?
Dennis.
Harold.
Here.
Hollenbaugh.
Here.
Odricio.
Here.
Phipps.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Sherry.
Here.
Okay. The minutes from our January 2 meeting were distributed for your perusal. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded at all, in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, same sign? Okay. Jody, do we have any correspondents this evening?
We do not.
That brings us to lobby visitations. Do we have anyone signed up for lobby visitations?
Yes, we do. Wendy Manning.
If you could, please, give your name and address for the record.
Sure, I'm Wendy Manning. I live at 865 West Worcester Street in Bowling Green, Ohio. And I'm here again as representative of the Citizens for PG Parks. I have two updates for you in the new year. It's 2024, so there's a lot going on. So first, just wanted to let you know that we're moving forward. We'll be forming a nonprofit organization. And we're going to be filed, we're hoping to file that next week with the state of Ohio. So then we'll be able to move forward in establishing a lease with the city of Bowling Green. So just wanted to give you a heads up with us moving forward. And second, we're really excited about a public meeting that we hope will happen soon in 2024. We know that our newest council member, Damon Sherry, is the chair of the Park Recreation Public Lands Committee. So we're looking forward to having to call a meeting. And we know that Joel and Mark are also members of that meeting. So we are happy to coordinate with you in any way for that event. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Sean Brennan.
Good evening. My name is Sean Brennan. I'm here on behalf of the Bowling Green Porch Fest Committee. And we wanted to announce that one of the Porch Fest this year will be on Saturday, June 28th. Once again, it will be, we'll invite you and the entire community. It'll be from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Fifteen porches, so more porches than last year. So same timeframe as last year, more porches, 15 to 18 bands. We'll once again have rostrated facilities and food truck on the neighborhood property, all private property. And let everyone know that you can look up on Facebook, it's under Porch Fest Bowling Green Ohio. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mary Hinkelmann.
We are in Union 217 South Church Street in Bowling Green, Ohio.
I have the annual report. Oh goodness, what happened there?
I don't know, but it got better.
It was me, sorry.
That was scary. I have the annual report done for Visit BG Ohio. I didn't get it emailed to you, so tonight I'm just going to give you each a copy so you can review it. And I will be back to the next city council meeting and see if you have any questions on some of the details that I'm sharing with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I didn't have a microphone, should I go?
Please.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mary.
That's everyone.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
That brings us to the introduction of new led.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
From the Finance Committee, I have five ordinances. First, an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023. And an ordinance amending and adopting sections 33.01G, pay bands 3, 4, and 5, and 33.01J of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary schedule established. An ordinance amending and adopting sections 33.09A and 33.09C of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding fire division composition. An ordinance amending and adopting section 33.18A of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salaried employees not subject to overtime pay. And an ordinance amending and adopting sections 33.22A 6 and A 7 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relating to sick leave.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I have an ordinance amending and adopting section 31.04 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that brings us to official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. This evening during my report, I'm pleased to welcome Planning Director Heather Saylor and John Sampin, representing the Historic Preservation Commission, to share with you a PowerPoint presentation updating on what I think is a pretty exciting improvement project that will affect our downtown area. So I'll turn it over to Heather and John at this point.
Good evening. Got it, thank you. Nice to see you all. I have my infamous co-chair, or actually Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, who is one of the hardest workers I know on this historical sign project. As you may recall, we became a certified local government on June 16 of 2021. And ever since then, we've had this really exciting pathway to some really cool things. One of those being the CLG grant that we were awarded this past summer. And ever since then, we've really been working very hard with a small subcommittee. We have some wonderful volunteers that have been working on these signs, which of course is John, Jeff Howes, and also Rose Drain, who's in the audience, Kathy Baker, and Jan Knapp. We've been meeting pretty regularly, and it's just been a fabulous project. Learned a lot about the local history, especially the building we're in right now. To get us started real quick, we just had some pictures of, on the slide here. That is Bowling Green in 1880. And then we have downtown Bowling Green in 1906. And then the third picture is a postcard from 1925. So the cool thing about those pictures is that the very last one, you'll still recognize many of those buildings. So we're really proud of this, this truly being our crown jewel in our community. So again, Historic Preservation Commission signage project. Again, we're on a really tight grant schedule, so we've been working really hard on this. It was a 60-40 grant, so the city, of course, we're very thankful, is contributing that 40% match to the 60. And we are actually planning 16 signs in the downtown and around. So it might not sound like a lot, but when you're researching each sign and trying to figure out the theme and topic, it's became quite the lift over the mountain, as we like to say earlier today when we had a meeting this afternoon. As far as research goes, that's probably been the most time-consuming piece of this whole project. And we're at the point where we have drafted the signs, did the majority of the research, and we're trying to collect high-resolution pictures. Again, very, very difficult to find these. And then, of course, the legal credits to give people for their photos. As far as the timeline, we have, of course, December, January, been working real hard. We hope to have all the finalized signs by February. And then the production of the signs in March, and then April, May installation. We're hoping in time for May as National Preservation Month, for obvious reasons. So I will turn that over to John to talk about the next phase.
Thank you, Heather. This is a photo of our subcommittee. Jeff Howes and I are the sort of the leaders along with Heather. And we, I think, have a terrific group, as they've already been introduced. But we're having a good time in this photo, looking at one of the signs that came back from our B sign company. We are still working on the designs, but we're getting closer. We're inching closer. We've had many meetings over the past few weeks. The next slide shows the mounting plan. Do I need to hit something? Okay. This, all these signs, there'll be 16 of them. And they'll be positioned, as you'll see in a moment, around the, mostly the downtown and the Worcester Green and the courthouse area. And they'll be on a single steel pedestal, as is shown here. Each sign is three feet by two feet?
Two by three.
Two by three. So this is a sample of what each of them will look like. We're not at the final stage yet, but this gives you an idea of what they will be looking like. What do I hit for the next? Okay, thank you. Our subcommittee came up with 16 different topics. And that's what you're looking at here. I don't know if you can read them from a distance, but most of them will be downtown. There'll be one on each of the four blocks of our downtown area. We have a sign on the schools, on Boomtown, the old post office, of course, where we're enjoying tonight. The northwest block, the police building, southwest block, churches. Northeast block, Four Corners, Hankey Block, the courthouse, Trinity, Women's Club, and Marriage Mill. The old armory and the former Hanneman Funeral Home that was located on Court Street. The old Ross Hotel, some of you may remember that, I don't. But that's been gone for a long time. And then a sign on transportation for the city. So we're really excited by each of these. As Heather said, there's been a terrific amount of research. We want to get it right. Once these signs are in place, we won't be able to fix them or change them. So we're checking dates and checking lots of information as we go along. Heather?
So to follow up with the sign themes, as part of our, based on requirements for the grant, we, of course, want to highlight our National Register of Historic Places and the architecture that our downtown does feature. So that is where the group really started, was, you know, where are our National Register buildings that we need to highlight, and again, the architecture? So just to give you a sample here, here are the structures within the city of Bowling Green that are on the National Register. And that really was a foundational issue that we wanted to cover with all the signs. We also gave you a copy on the PowerPoint, too, if you can see that, of what was part of the application for the Main Street Historic District. So again, pretty cool to see, really, the buildings that were there and still exist, you know, many, many years later. And, you know, just a little tidbit, the Lincoln Building, which is on the northeast corner of downtown, is the oldest building, we think, according to our research, in the city. It has actually survived two monstrous fires that happened in the downtown in 1887 and 1888. And it's kind of interesting, because in 88, or 1888, it literally jumped Worcester Street, jumped the Lincoln Building, and then went to the next buildings, which, of course, were wooden-framed. And the Lincoln Building is brick. So, you know, clearly, brick will outlast a fire most times. But it's kind of neat to see that building still remaining here in our downtown from 1874. So again, we cover on the signage Wood County Courthouse and the former jail, the U.S. Post Office, as John mentioned, what we're in now, Main Street Historic District. Of course, not Needle Hall, since that's not part of downtown. It actually already has some signage in the park anyways, and the Boomtown Historic District. So this is a general map of where we are going to place the signs in general. So our plan is to have at least three at the Worcester Green. And those are really more generalized signs, so about churches, about the schools, and Worcester Green itself. So it's just really interesting, I think, when those all come together. And then, of course, the courthouse was really a primary feature of our community that we really wanted to highlight. So just to give you an example, that would go by the courthouse for obvious reasons. So here's some of the, we'll call it the raw data, the raw slides that we had our volunteers work on. So each volunteer were assigned their projects, again, had to do their research, try to find their pictures, and then put something together for the sign company that made somewhat of sense, at least to get them started. So here is one of the slides about the Four Corners. And again, you'll see the Lincoln Building there, which is on the top left. That's the Lincoln Building, you know, way back when. And then, as I said, fires did miss that. However, a cattle truck in 1944 did not miss that building, unfortunately. So, but we're lucky to still have that. And you will tell when you look at it from Worcester Street that the frontage, the facade, is different. So it's kind of an interesting, we think, fact that will go on that particular sign. Of course, among other facts about the Four Corners in general. Here is another sign, kind of in its raw form, that we submitted to the sign company, which is the Wood County Courthouse. Another thing we had to run through is courthouse. Is courthouse one word or two words? We had to, you know, you'll see it all kinds of ways. So that, we basically talked to the commissioners, and we, you know, we're meeting with our stakeholders, too. And we're going with courthouse, capitalized, one word, just so you know. But when you do do a lot of research and look at a lot of old newspaper articles, you'll see it as two words. So here are, here's one of the signs that we got back from the sign company, again, in a very rough draft form. Give us an idea of the layout, the text, and we, again, we brought that mock-up for you to see also, and the size. And then this would be, again, an early draft of Bowling Green's historic churches. So we've had many, many churches in the city. Some you will recognize that still stand today, and some that are no longer with us. But again, we thought it was really neat to really focus on that, even some that have been reused in other ways. So we're, again, happy to celebrate those and have everybody see the history of those buildings. So on behalf of our historic preservation, we need to thank our community for being, you know, very involved in this process. We're going to continue that engagement. You know, one thing we really want are high-quality, high-resolution pictures. If we can get those, you know, maybe you have, you know, Grandma or Grandpa had some in their basement, or you happen to know some at your home. We would appreciate knowing about those, and we may be able to use those on a sign. But most of all, the National Park Service, this is federal money that's awarded by the National Park Service through the Ohio History Connection. So we really need to thank them for their support, and of course, again, the city of Bowling Green. And another little fact there, where the Milliken is, that used to be the lease house from 1854. It did burn down in, I believe it was the 87 fire. So again, very fascinating what's been there, and that, again, you know, it is, you know, put to good use. And we're happy that that building's still here, too. So that's basically an update, Historic Preservation Commission. We, meeting about this regularly. We'll have another, I'm sure, presentation again next Tuesday when we meet at 4 o'clock. Everybody's welcome to keep up on this process. And again, we thank you for your support. If you have any questions, let me know, or John. And again, thank you for your support.
Mr. President. I do have a quick question.
Sure.
Are there going to be any efforts made to make the signs accessible for, like, blind? Either like have an audio, like an audio link or braille?
That's a great question. We did talk about that as being probably a step-two process, because we are building out a QR code. If you'll see on all the signs, there's so much interesting information we've uncovered during this process that we know we can't fit it all on a two-by-three sign. So that QR code is actually going to be housed by the city, and it will be a Ezri Story Map, it's called. It's what, similar to what we did for the History Lives Here project, with the signs that you could scan with the QR code, and then you could get all that information. So we hope that is step two, that we will have an audio portion. But we kind of have to take one bite of the apple at a time, and this was a pretty big bite of the apple. So we do hope to do that in the future. Additionally, we do have a partner that, from Toledo, that has actually already made, basically, a tour of the downtown on an app. You do have to buy it. I think it's minimal. Do you remember, John?
Nine dollars.
Nine dollars, something like that. So you can do that now, actually. It doesn't match our signs exactly, but it's very similar facts that we have covered. And we also were careful to make sure the signs were designed, so a wheelchair could, you know, get around it also. So it definitely was something we kept in mind.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Heather, John, thank you very much for your report. I appreciate that update. I also want to thank you both and all of those involved, all the members of the committee that are working so hard on this project. I think it's a terrific project. I think it's going to be a really great enhancement to our downtown area, and I appreciate the work, the effort. I'm particularly impressed with the amount of research that is going, that has gone into and is going into each one of the signs. I mean, it's, you certainly grasp the importance of accuracy and historical accuracy. So just thanks again for all of your work. I think it's going to be really a great project.
Thank you. I did have to mention Dick Martin. He's been a huge part of our committee. He knows everything and anything about Bowling Green. It's very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Specialists. Rose Drain is one of them on our subcommittee. We're very fortunate that those friends have agreed to help us. And the signs are changing every day as we find new information. We had a meeting this afternoon, and we're scratching out some pictures and adding more. I might just mention that the signs are pretty, well, I don't want to say totally indestructible, but they've been designed so that if there's magic markers that are being written on, the signs can be cleaned without any, any. The courthouse is particularly concerned about that. Evidently, they get a lot of vandalism there. So we're conscious of that. I think these signs, they're designed to last 10 to 15 years, and we hope they'll last a lot longer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Subject to any questions?
Are there any questions for the mayor this evening? Okay.
Thank you.
Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening, council. Wanted to update you about some staffing changes going on here at the city of Bowling Green. Four positions that I'll be speaking with you about this evening. We've had two internal promotions at the city that we are pleased to announce. Mayor Osbacher has appointed Martha Woolkey, who is currently the Community Development Department Head, is now the Administrative Bureau Director for the city of Bowling Green. So in that capacity, she is working with Finance, HR, IT, and the Law Department. She will be also continuing as the Community Development Director as well, and that is very common. Most of our Bureau Directors also have a, actually, all of us have department head positions as well. So she will continue guiding that department along with the Administrative Bureau. As such, she has moved to the second floor in our office suite area. We are also pleased to announce that Mayor Osbacher has appointed Amanda Gambi as the Director of Communications for the city of Bowling Green. That position had been previously served, the Bureau of Public Services, Joe Fawcett, had served as the Department Head for Communications. And with his departure, Amanda had been long-serving in the acting capacity, but is now permanently in that position. So we will be backfilling Amanda's position. And if you noted in your council packet this evening, there is legislation reflecting that change to fill the position of Sustainability Coordinator that Amanda had served in previously. We do have two open executive positions at the city right now. Our former IT Director, Chris Lovelace, due to family matters, moved out of state. And so that job is out and being advertised at this time. And we were recently informed that Robert Wright, our Income Tax Commissioner, will also be leaving for another job opportunity, and that replacement is currently under discussion. And that completes my report this evening, subject to your questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Tretter? Thank you very much. City Attorney, Mr. Brown.
No report unless you have questions.
Any questions for Mr. Brown this evening? All right. I see Brian is not here.
Correct, he's down at Amp, Amp, Ohio. But if you have questions, we can try.
Okay. Any, any questions?
Please don't challenge us too much.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to council committee report. Council committee report.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
The Finance Committee will meet at 6:30 p.m. on February 5th for the purpose of receiving a review of the 2023 finances for the year, an annual wrap-up from the Finance Director.
Okay. There will be a council committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday, February 20th at 6 p.m. This will be prior to our second meeting in February. The purpose of this meeting will be for council to discuss ARPA funding. This will be a work session with no public comment.
So you said 20th at what time?
20th at 6 p.m. Any other council committee reports? Okay. That brings us to the reading of legislation. Jody?
Legislation for first reading. Ordinance number 9160 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 9160 its second and third readings.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, Jody?
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended for ordinance 9160.
Ordinance number 9160 for second and third readings. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt ordinance 9160.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, Jody?
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 9160 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9161 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section 31.04 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio. Ordinance number 9162 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting sections 33.01G, pay bands 3, 4, and 5, and 33.01J of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary schedule established. Ordinance number 9163 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting sections 33.09A and 33.09C of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding fire division composition. Ordinance number 9164 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section 33.18A of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salaried employees not subject to overtime pay. Ordinance number 9165 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting sections 33.22A 6 and A 7 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relating to sick leave. Legislation for second reading. Ordinance number 9159 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing an agreement between the city of Bowling Green, Ohio and the Wood County Airport Authority. There is no legislation for third reading.
Okay. Is there any other business to come before council this evening? Okay, I will just note, in case anyone's interested, North Baltimore Local Schools is on a two-hour delay in the morning, which is important to me, because I teach there, so.
Then it's important to us.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded at all, in favor, say aye. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O same sign? We are adjourned.